The successful redevelopment of the Twin Peaks Mall represents one of this community's highest priorities. Earlier this year, the City of Longmont Urban Renewal Authority entered into a formal agreement with the owner of the property, Newmark Merrill Companies, which is intended to facilitate the redevelopment of the property and the elimination of blighted conditions on the site as soon as possible. As the community knows, two key negotiations are required to be completed prior to the commencement of the project. A long-term commitment to operate a new theater on the site was required from Regal Cinemas, and Dillard's must provide their approval of future development plans. Negotiations between Newmark Merrill and these companies have been conducted for the past several months. Senior staff have been serving as facilitators of discussion, but specific terms have been exchanged directly between the parties. As of today, Newmark Merrill and Regal Cinemas has reached an agreement on a long-term lease that will enable Regal Cinemas to operate a new 12-screen theater at Twin Peaks. The parties have agreed to all terms embodied in the proposed lease, and the only final items to settle are limited to a few terms contained in lease exhibits. That is good news for the project and the community, and we want to express our appreciation to both parties for coming to a successful conclusion to their negotiations, especially given the fact that it was completed within an accelerated period of time. Unfortunately, as of this evening, Dillard's and Newmark Merrill have not come to a successful conclusion to their negotiations. However, Newmark Merrill has prepared a final offer that will be conveyed to Dillard's for their consideration tomorrow. This negotiation with Dillard's must be resolved before anything can happen at the site. If the final offer to Dillard's from Newmark Merrill is declined, the LoRa Board will retain the option to consider authorizing the use of intimate domain. That option may be scheduled for consideration by the LoRa Board on April 9th or sooner if warranted. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the March 19th, 2013 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
And Witt.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right. I'd like to invite Cub Scout Dan #158 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard, or on any items at the end of the meeting. We now have the minutes to approve from the February 26th. Are there any corrections to be made or discussions? All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
I move we accept the minutes of the February 26th meeting.
Second. All right. Let's vote. Okay, it passes seven to zero. We now have the minutes to approve from the, is it March 5th regular session? Yes, okay. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we approve the minutes of March 5th, 2013.
All right. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, there's actually three items. The first is Resolution 2013-27 dealing with the IGA between the city and the school district. That'll be added to your consent agenda. The second is a submission of a Department of Justice grant, which will also be added to your consent agenda. I'll read the full title in a little while. And then the third one, also going on consent at this point, is legislative update, where we ask for two positions of support on House Bill 131080 and 13181, Senate Bill 181. Those were all emailed to you on Friday and also posted on the web for citizens to be able to view.
Okay. Is there a report from the City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we have a couple of items in the City Manager's report. The first is going to be presented by Joe Ward and Doug Benny, and it's going to be an update on Fireball Run. Joe.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Doug Benny, Economic Development Manager. Also with me is Joe Ward from Visit Longmont. Just really want to give you an update on an event that we were able to secure. It's called Fireball Run. This will be for 2013. The dates are September 20th and 21st. This is an adventure rally that includes 40 teams that are using the United States, and this quadrant of the United States is their game board to play a game of Trivia Pursuit. What it means for Longmont is we are the green flag starting point, and it's going to go from Longmont to Riverside, California. There are eight cities along the way. There's two elements to it, and the reason I'm up here actually is, one of those is economic development. The nature of these teams, the makeup, are business executives, business owners, people of independent wealth means, veterans, and a few other categories that they allow. So there's 40 to 45 teams, but they look for communities that are not necessarily lesser known, but undiscovered. And part of that is for their economic development climate. In addition to, Joe will talk about the destination-location aspect, but they contacted me to see what our Economic Development Department and our Business Assistance Programs, how we operated. Were we progressive? Did we offer incentives? If so, what did they look like? Just really to kind of judge if Longmont would be a good community for these participants to mix and mingle in. So we had a visit from them back in February, a three-day visit, where we showed them different aspects of Longmont. They liked what they saw. They worked with Joe on the destination-location aspects. I showed them the economic development aspects, and they were encouraged enough to give us a start. Of the eight cities along the route, the start and the finish are the two most prestigious, and they indicated that the start was by far the most prestigious. So this is an event that's not going to cost us any upfront dollars. It's being coordinated by Joe and me as a team to go forward with putting the logistics together. So it's a win-win all the way around. I'll let Joe talk about the visitor aspect.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. And I just wanted to say, last time I think I was here, we were pitching to try to get USA Pro, which, as we know, didn't come to be, but we did land this one, the Fireball Run, and we're very excited about it. Just to give you an idea on the public relations side of it, they had tracked $44 million in PR value at last year's event that is streamed totally online. So it's a completely online TV program. People that are participating, Captain John McBride, who's a former astronaut, as well as the former, just recently former President of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, Terry Stewart, who also is the former President of Marvel Entertainment. So the real pitch here is from Longmont to Riverside, an eight-day journey, 1,500 miles. And it's just going to be a great opportunity to showcase us, showcase the community. And when we hosted them, they were very pleasantly surprised. And as Doug alluded to, they do like to find what I call, and they call, under-discovered. And because basically, all these people who participate have gone to all the big cities. They've gone to Denver and Las Vegas and DC and done all that work, but they want to know something more about the heart of America in an area that has progressive economic development programs, as well as a destination that they feel people should probably hear a little bit more about. So we're pretty excited. I like to also refer to it as Cannonball Run without the speed. So don't worry, it's the start of the rally. So before Councilmember Bagley asked me about people's drive it all over town and the big party, we're trying to do this in conjunction with Oktoberfest this fall that Left Hand Brewery puts together. So we're going to try to work, put a piece like that together. As well as, this is the start of the journey. So for three days, they're kind of here showing off their cars, probably at Roosevelt Park. And then we'll hopefully have a nice shiny Lots of Lights, Police S court to send them on their way and participants from all over the community. So, pardon me.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, can you explain the, not only, you've explained the aspects of how the rally goes, but who does it benefit and what?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Well, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Santos. They also have a great cause, which is to support the search for missing children. And I'm glad you brought that up, because to date, the program and the event has aided in the recovery of its, I believe, 37 or 38 missing children. 38. So they really take that seriously, plus they also would like to work with a local charity to support them as well.
Just a quick update to this. I think one of the reasons we brought Joe and Doug forward today is as they were working on the press release to issue it, we started seeing press releases hitting in other communities on the route that actually said Longmont was the start of the race. And so we felt like we needed to talk to you all today and talk to this.
And after, I was going to say, and after that was brought to my attention, I also found a nice poster on the Fireball Run Facebook page, which is the, it's the event poster that they've already put out. So everyone's excited about it, and I think we were just waiting for some final edits on a press release and trying to time it after some big event going on at Roosevelt or at Left Hand Brewing Company this weekend. But the word got out, so we're glad to share it with you. And we've been wanting to and chomping at the bit, because, you know, we think it's going to be a really special way to highlight the community, and we wanted to tell everybody. And I do want to thank everyone that participated when they visited. I know we had three members here that were able to come, two, I'm sorry, the mayor and Mayor Protem. And they really were impressed by the community backing it, from the city to economic development, to tourism, to all the partners that we showed them along the way, from hotel properties, restaurants, just even people they met in the community. So I'd be glad to take any other questions if there are any.
It sure is hard to keep things under wraps with instant news now, isn't it?
Yeah. I think the one thing I'm trying to do all the time to my board and to the community is try to really communicate the power of social media. community is try to really communicate the power of social media. And I think I had a learning lesson with that too, that the cat's out of the bag, you can't stop it. So let's get it out and talk about it.
Longmont, Colorado to Riverside, California.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Doug.
The second item that we have for you today in City Manager Report is going to be presented by Dale Radamaker. It is regarding the CBT water in the Cache and Lewa. There was a Water Board meeting yesterday and they discussed some information and we felt like we needed to bring that to council today considering the schedule that we have over the next few weeks.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. And as Harold has mentioned, the Water Board at its meeting yesterday considered the Cache and Lewa price for raw water, which is the price that people pay when they want to deliver, want to pay cash in Lewa delivering water to meet their water deficits at time of development. The Water Board is charged to do that work. They are charged to do it no less frequently than quarterly each year. And so this would be the first quarter review. So the phenomena that we have going on is a rising market for the price of water. And that is probably being driven by any number of different things. My take on it is that it's most likely driven by an uptick in the economy and an uptick in the demand for water. As council probably knows, CBT is the most highly traded water, if you will, most frequently traded and sold water in northern Colorado. And that's because it can be used basically anywhere from Fort Collins to Boulder and then now along to Platte to Fort Morgan. So the current price for Cache and Lewa, again, which is the market price of CBT, was at $10,000 a unit. The data that the Water Board is looking at is suggesting that it could go upwards of $15,000 per unit. And that is in fact the recommendation that staff will be forwarding from the Water Board to the City Council in April. That's obviously a 50% increase in the price of raw water. I will caveat it with a couple of things though. This Cache and Lewa issue and price is not, is not the same, say, as a system development fee, which typically only goes one way, up. So the historical use of Cache and Lewa is that it goes up and it comes down. It truly does follow the market. So looking at that historically, and we will have all this information in front of you in April, back in September of 2000, March to September of the year 2000, it was last at about this level. It was at just under 15,000 acre foot, I think it was around 13.5. And in perspective, so councils at that time also had a very high accelerated market because if you look back in the history, back about a year earlier in January of 1999, the value was $3,900. So it went from $3,900 to $17,700 over a period of a little over a year at the turn of the century. So we're in that similar kind of mode. That's what's happening. The other thing I would share with the council though is that times continue to change. And CBT is a, I call it a diminishing commodity. The available units that are left for transfer from predominantly from agriculture to municipal are, is declining. And there are many water districts that CBT is their only supply of water. So they are certainly fairly aggressive on getting out there and buying it. Longmont is not necessarily in that, in that same situation. We rely on a vast array of water rights to meet our water supply. So things that I would want the council to consider, and I think the Water Board would as well, is, you know, the current policy limits what the Water Board can do. It states that it will be set on the market price of CBT. You know, that's it. And that's in Section 1405 of the code. What I would suggest that we might want to consider is that there are a variety of ways under which you can evaluate and analyze and set the Cache and Lewa value. If that is council's interest to direct the staff and Water Board to look at that, that's certainly something that can be done. So again, I wanted to sort of frame it in the historical perspective. This isn't necessarily unique. Actually, it's not unique. It has happened before. And the price may stay up, it may go back down. It does tend to fluctuate with the economy. Also would say that the drought is probably having some impact in that water providers might be getting nervous and out there trying to scare up some water. So tonight, I just really wanted to brief you on it, that it's going to be coming in in April and give you some time to think about it so that when it is in front of you, if there's direction that you want to give us, we can certainly look at that and would welcome that. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, we'll.
Councilmember Santos.
Mayor, Dale, is staff looking at all options regarding whether to increase or not increase it? Are there, I mean, how is it the Water Board meeting in favor? Their recommendation is to raise it to 15,000, but I mean, are there any other options that we will look at instead of raising?
Mayor Coombs and Mayor Protem Santos, there are other approaches. One approach would be that you would evaluate and consider what the price of new water supplies are for your community. And you would balance that or at least take that in consideration with CBT. What I would say is that I wouldn't jettison the CBT influence, if you will, because it probably does best represent, at least in northern Colorado, what the value of an acre foot of water is. You know, that's, that is what the market says. But I think, I think there's other factors that could be taken into consideration. Right now, we're following the code and we would bring forward the Water Board recommendation for council consideration. And that would be the time, Mayor Protem Santos, if the council has a, has a interest in possibly looking at other options, it's certainly a time to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Are you done?
The only thing I would point out is that the options they will present you in this process are based on the code. And so there would need to be a policy discussion by council if you wanted us to look at other options. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a proclamation designating March 20th through the 31st as Community Food Share Drive Week in Longmont. I believe we may have Mr. Peter Torres, a member of Community Food Share. First, I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation designating March 21st through the 31st, 2013, as Community Food Share Food Drive Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas hunger denies dignity, lessens humans' energy, erodes community and family stability, and impairs the potential of people and societies to achieve, and whereas community food share exists so that those in need in Boulder and Broomfield Counties have enough to eat, and whereas Community Food Share distributes over 7.5 million meals in 2013 and 3.785, 731 pounds of nutritionist food, 53% of the total food distributed by the Community Food Share in 2012 were distributed in Longmont area through 17 member agencies and through their own direct distribution programs. And whereas Longmont citizens are a very generous and compassionate people with a long and strong history of support of Community Food Share in its 32 years of service to our community. And whereas The Times Call is a sponsor for the 25th Annual Hunger Hurts the Whole Community Food Drive in Longmont for the Community Food Share from March 20th through March 31st, 2013. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim March 20th through, March 20th through the 31st, 2013, as Community Food Share Food Drive Week in Longmont. And I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of the special and vital services provided to the hungry in Longmont by Community Food Share and to donate food and dollars with a generous spirit for those in need. So I'd like you to come forward and accept this.
Mayor and council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank you for recognizing Community Food Share. My name is Pete Stortz. I'm a local business owner here in Longmont. I'm also on the Board of Community Food Share. As the proclamation states, approximately half of the need in Boulder-Broomfield Counties is in the City of Longmont. So that is the primary and important focus of our organization. 2013 will be an exciting year. We're going to be moving to a new facility that almost triples the amount of size we have, or space we have to serve what's still unfortunately in unmet need around food security. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here and thanks for all the work that you do in our community. Next, we have a proclamation designating April 1st through 7th, 2013, as Community Development Awareness Week in Longmont. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating April 1st through the 7th, 2013, as Community Development Awareness Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, program has for 39 years provided local governments with resources to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate incomes. And whereas in Longmont, 29 years of Community Development Block Grant funding has had a significant impact on our community, not only through 13.6 million in grant funding and 1.7 million in program income invested in our community, but also through job creation and retention, an improved tax, local tax base, physical redevelopment of our infrastructure and housing stock, reinvesting in our neighborhoods, improvements in the lives of our lower-income residents, and development of strong network of partnerships with many nonprofit agencies that provide services to our residents. And whereas the City of Longmont appreciates the flexibility of the Community Development Block Grant Program that allows our community to identify, prioritize, and resolve our most pressing local problems such as job creation and economic development, neighborhood revitalization, and affordable housing. And whereas the week of April 1st through the 7th, 2013, has been set aside to reaffirm the significance of the Community Development Block Grant Program in meeting the needs of low and moderate-income residents and eliminating or preventing slum or blighting conditions. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1st through the 7th, 2013, as the Community Development Awareness Week in Longmont. And I invite all citizens to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and its importance to our community. And I think we have Kathy Fedler that's going to come forward and accept this block grant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler, CDVG and Affordable Housing Programs Coordinator. I do have a few comments I'd like to make just to reiterate. As we are at the end of the 2012 year, we have finished our, are starting to wrap up our annual performance report. And as indicated in your packet, since the city first received funds in 1984, CDVG funds, we've received over $13.6 million in CDVG funds and 1.7 million in program income. This has leveraged over $68.6 million in other public and private funding over the years, increasing the funding available for projects and the investment in our low and moderate-income residents and neighborhoods. Through 2012, the city has used an aggregate of 95% of its funds to benefit low and moderate-income persons, which is the primary national objective. The minimum requirement is that 70% of your CDVG funds have to be used for low and moderate-income persons. In addition, we've directly assisted 12 businesses to start up or grow their businesses through low-interest loans, creating 13 full-time and 10 part-time jobs to date in partnership with the Economic Development Department. We've also provided funding to over 40 construction and local supply businesses in 2012, keeping 135 local workers employed. I did put some information on your desk that kind of summarizes how we spent the funds in 2012. And one of the charts that's attached to that, over $500,000 was spent in 2012, shows the funds budgeted as part of the total budget. So about 33% of the total CDVG funds in 2012 went for housing programs, 23% for neighborhood improvement projects, 3% for community involvement project, investment projects, 31%, sorry, percent for economic development, and then 10, about 10% for administration. The funds spent in the categories by, the total expenditures, about 48% of the funds spent in 2012 went for housing programs, 19% for neighborhood improvement programs, 4% for community investment, 15% for economic development, and 14% for administration. This shows of the funds that were set aside or budgeted in each of the categories of housing, neighborhood revitalization, et cetera, how much of those funds were actually spent in those categories. So as you can see, we're doing a good job of spending the funds budgeted in housing and community investment programs, little bit less so in neighborhood improvement and economic development, but those are coming along compared to past years. And then finally, this chart shows the funds that we received in 2012, the amount of program income we received in 2012, the funds that were held over from previous years, the total funds committed, 1.153 million in funding was committed. A little less than 10,000 was uncommitted, unprogrammed at this point in time. 573,000 was spent, leaving us an unspent balance at the end of 2012 of 643,000. So I'd like to call up Darlene Valentine, who is one of the recipients of our CDVG rehab program, and she has a couple of words she'd like to say.
This all started for me is that I had a sewer line problem and I went out and dug up my whole sewer line and found a huge crack. So I went to the city and then I found out about this program and I thought, oh, boy, my chimney's falling down and I'm losing my front porch. And in fact, the mailman was always worried there were going to fall on the steps that were crumbling away. And so I was talking to the city about it and also, oh, I was losing my back deck. And, oh, she's showing you pictures. And anyway, so I used the program and that's my new chimney. The other one would fall and clunk down all the time. And it was wonderful and I just wanted to say, I think the program's great and thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for sharing your testimony with us. I know a few things about sewer line problems too.
And then we also have Habitat for Humanity is here. Julie, you want to come up and say a few words? And she has a homeowner with her.
Evening. My name is Julie Gallegos and I'm the Director of Family Services at Habitat for Humanity, St. Brain Valley. David Emerson, our Executive Director, could not be here today. He had another meeting. He apologizes. He wanted to pass along his thanks for the City of Longmont and their support for our Baker Street project. This project will bring eight families into our home ownership program. Each family has gone through an extensive family selection process that involves background checks, credit checks, several references, landlord, employer. All eight will put in a minimum of 350 hours to help build their homes. They will also take seven educational classes with Boto County Housing and Human Services on subjects as homeownership, budgeting, and what it means to be a good neighbor. Once they move in, they will assume a no profit, no interest mortgage or its equivalent, which will go back to Habitat to help build more homes. So each family will pay back in full what it costs to build their home. This project received $290,000 in city-supported funding to develop the property. Of that, $100,000 is from federal HUD money and the remainder are zero interest loans that Habitat will pay back in full to the city. We wanted to let you know that with the city's commitment, we leveraged your investment to raise an additional $541,000 in support for this project. Of that, $404,000 came from organizations. Of that, 404,000 came from organizations or sources that reside outside of the city of Longmont. Lastly, we have engaged over 1,100 volunteers who have spent 17,000 hours so far working together to complete this project and building community in the process. So again, thank you very much. With that, I'd like to introduce one of our homeowners. This is Patricia Chavez de Nahara, and she and her son completed all of their requirements and moved into their home in May of 2012. And she has been paying her mortgage since that time and is generous enough to share her story, and I will be translating for her.
Mi nombre es Patricia Nahara.
My name is Patricia Nahara.
Después de que mi esposo emigráramos de México y estuviéramos viviendo por casi 20 años en un rancho, mi esposo era, trabajaba en un rancho.
After we immigrated from Mexico, my husband was working on a farm. He was a, for about 20 years.
El 2010, este, él tuvo un trágico accidente en el trabajo.
And in 2010, my husband had a terrible accident on the farm.
Y él nunca, nunca necesitamos comprar una casa porque siempre, él decía que siempre íbamos a tener una casa por el trabajo que él desempañaba.
We never needed to buy our own home because my husband always said that we had, the house was connected to his employment, and we always had a place to live.
Pero al morir él en ese accidente en el trabajo, este, todo se desmoronó en nuestra vida.
But after this accident, after he was killed, then everything changed for us.
Yo no, no hallaba donde, una solución para donde ir porque yo no sabía mucho de finanzas ni cómo buscar una casa.
I didn't know exactly what I was going to do. I didn't have financial counsel, I didn't have the ability to look for housing or didn't understand the finances of it.
Y una persona con la que yo trabajaba limpiando su casa, me dijo que yo podía ir a esta, este, organización.
Somebody who, who I was cleaning houses for told me about the Habitat program and told me that I should talk with them.
Y doy gracias a Dios porque yo fui y apliqué para mi casa y todas mis posibilidades estaban de acuerdo a los requisitos que ellos me pedían.
And so I give thanks to God that I had gone and everything that, all of the requirements I was able to fulfill.
Yo necesitaba un módico pago mínimo para pagar mi casa, tener un buen crédito y ser una buena ciudadana y tener todos mis requisitos correctamente.
I was looking for an affordable payment, and I had good credit, and I was able to fulfill the requirements.
Y este, doy gracias a Dios porque me encontré con Julie y ella pudo, este, mi vida pudo transformarse de un, de una cosa trágica a tener mi hogar.
I was grateful, thank God that I was able to meet Julie and this program, and my life was able to be transformed from a tragedy into something good.
Pude desempeñar mis horas de trabajo y, y este, yo siempre digo que esta organización para mí son como ángeles que Dios tiene en la tierra.
I was able to finish all of my hours, and I always say that this organization was God's angels here on earth.
Porque ellos hacen las casas con mucho amor. Cuando uno entra a vivir siente, siente uno el amor que ellos ponen en esa obra de esa casa.
You can definitely feel the love that, when people are making these houses, it's made with love.
Y está muy accesible. Usted puede, podemos dormir y saber que vamos a tener el pago a tiempo y cumplir con las necesidades que ellos nos dicen.
And we know that the house is affordable, and we have a place that we can call our own.
Y por eso yo estoy agradecida haber encontrado esta, este programa que es accesible y cambia nuestras vidas de los que tenemos necesidad de un hogar que nunca hemos tenido.
And so we are grateful that this program is affordable and accessible so that we can, it can help transform our lives.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, Donna from the Inbetween is here with one of the new renters at 230 Kaufman.
Hi. I'm Donna Lovato. I'm the Executive Director of the Inbetween, and I want to say thank you for having us. And I'd like to, again, I love CDBG, and I want to give thanks to city staff, Kathy Fedler and Tracy DiFrancesco. They have been amazingly helpful with us, everything that we've been doing. And then the staff at Building and Code Enforcement, Chris and Michelle. Anytime we have stuff, we take it to them, and it's been really nice. So at 230 Kaufman, we have 17 units. The best part is that we have, 13 of them are three-bedroom apartments and four are two-bedroom apartments, and that increased our transitional housing to 68. And people not only get affordable housing, but they get case management and lots of classes, financial management, life skills, parenting, and so on. So the money that we got from CDBG, we've been able so far to put a new roof, a new boiler, windows, entry doors, and we've been remodeling units. We not only got CDBG money, but we've got other funding. So our, when I say remodel, I'm saying really remodel, we've turned everything out, and it has new kitchen cabinets, sinks, faucets, floors, interior doors. I mean, they're just really, really nice. I brought some pictures, and I'm going to pass them around. And the things that we're still working on are the walkways, the railing and the decking, the carpet areas, the stucco, and a new playground for the kids there. And so I have some pictures, so I'll kind of walk away, and then I'll introduce you to Maria Smith, who's a resident at 230 Kaufman with her two sons and her newlywed husband. And she's going to give a testimonial. But what I'm passing around, which is kind of cool, is, this is kind of bad pictures, and then you turn around and it's a good picture. And then there's a couple, and this one, I brought it because it's kind of funny. It's a plunger in the bathtub. And anytime you have a plunger in a bathtub, not a good thing. So I'm just going to pass these around, and then Kathy will pick them up afterward. So, thank you. And this is Maria Smith.
Hi. My name is Maria Smith. I'm the resident at Inbetween, and I'm still, I'm very, very happy and my new resident because before I had problems with my family because I had domestic violence. Me and my kids just go to the shelters all the time, and I find Inbetween, and it's helped us a lot. Before, I'm looking for apartment, but I don't have much money for the posse, the rent, and that's why I'm going to the shelters, friends. But now, I have Inbetween helped us a lot. Before, I'm going to this apartment in Kaufman, and this apartment is the more cheapest, you know, and I'm going to look and look and look. And, but their rent is 545. But when I look inside, it's not safe. You know, they stew, the walls, the carpet. And I have my kid have asthma, and that's why, one of my friends told me, go to Inbetween, Inbetween help you. And I said, okay, and I'm going, and I'm going there, and I'm very happy with my kids. Yeah.
Thank you for testimony.
And I have a very safe house.
This is a great community. Kathy, if you, do you have any more testimony, or could you, well, can you invite everybody that testified to maybe come down, and you hold this proclamation and have your picture taken of them all? I think one of them may have slipped out. So first up is Jeffrey Justin. So please come down and give your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey Justice, 1503 Lamplighter Drive, Longmont. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about dogs shot by police. I moved to Longmont from San Diego about five years ago. Loved this town. I've always been very impressed with the animal control. Animal control officers and Sergeant Moore acted nothing but professional in the several dealings I've had with them. The Longmont Humane Society is an example to other municipalities of what can be done at a facility like that, far ahead of San Diego. I also appreciate that Longmont doesn't have any breed-specific laws, that you focus on the individual dog and the owner instead of a specific breed. But we have to take a look around us. 2011, Erie, a citizen calls the police for help. Police come to the house, the dog gets out, the dog is shot by the police officer, right in the person's yard. It's funny, the dog still had its toy in its mouth, but the police officer felt threatened. January 2012, Adams County. Burglar alarm goes off, sheriff's deputies go to the wrong address. Open the door, dog comes out, they shoot the dog and also insult the citizen. Both of these are in litigation, and the police department and municipalities don't always win these lawsuits. I could fill your inbox with evidence of that. Commerce City, two of them, 2010, a mistaken 911 call. The police come even though they knew it was a mistake and shot the citizen's dog in their driveway in front of their children. November, the Chloe case, you all have to hear about that. The police came to a loose dog call. It ended up in a shooting, but surprise, it was captured on video by a 12-year-old. The DA has charged that officer with a Class 6 felony, aggravated animal cruelty. What kind of a police officer is charged with that type of crime? Not in Longmont, I hope. Everyone has a smartphone these days, so this type of police misconduct is going to be caught on video more and more. There's going to be more lawsuits, more prosecutions. These departments had a lack of training, no training, or they didn't take it seriously, and it shows in these tragic results. So what I'm asking Longmont City Council is let's ask the police chief to review our animal encounter procedures and lethal force procedures. Do we have best practices? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. I think that's a reasonable request. Let's look it over, why not? Are we ahead of the curve? Are we leading the way? Are we just one shot away from being another Commerce City? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Good evening, buenas noches. My name is Marietta Vigil Gonzalez. I represent the 53 registered neighborhood groups that meet monthly where we receive information that we have collectively asked from the city. This is where we discuss common neighborhood issues and collectively work together to solve our problems and to make Longmont a better place to live. One of the perks of attending the neighborhood group leaders is that we can apply for grants that you as a council will be discussing tonight. The 11 grants that we as a group have approved are just a sample of others that have been awarded through the years. It is very difficult and an intricate process to get a neighborhood improvement grant. It must have collective planning, collective research, and very detailed work to meet all the criteria for safety, city regulations, and very important as well, sustainability by the neighborhood once the project is completed. Among the 11 grants that were awarded this year were projects relating to water conservancy, irrigation, playground updates, landscape improvements, lighting, and last but not least, a school bus stop bench. In looking at these grants, the city funding was 39% of the cost of the grants, and the neighborhoods contributed the other 61% of the total cost of the grants, either in monetary donations, donations of materials, or in-kind work. This labor of love for our neighborhood is priceless. The fact that we as a neighborhood have to provide donations, materials, and in-kind labor gives us another opportunity to work together for a cause that we value and will carry on into the future. And very importantly, I repeat again, without any additional help from city funds to maintain the project. You cannot put a price on building neighborhood pride and a feeling of community when one works together. These neighborhoods are a great example of how the city gets so much, as you would say, bang for your buck. We want to thank you as a council for your support, John Clark, our great leader, and also all the city staff in the different departments who help us develop the great projects which improve the neighborhoods of Longmont. To the citizens viewing this meeting tonight, I want to say, if you are not an organized neighborhood and don't send anyone to our meetings, we want you to be a part of this great project. Call the Neighborhood and Community Resource Office of the City of Longmont and become a part of building a greater Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Marietta. And that is Matt, working theme.
Yes, sir. You said it correct.
Thank you. I do eventually learn.
Mayor Coombs and City Council, I just want to let you know, definitely, I from my heart want to definitely say I'm sorry about the guy that passed away in the lake. I know how awful it is that things happen in our city that are unpredictable and uncalled for. I do want to thank the phenomenal police department, the men and women in law enforcement that definitely do a good job of keeping our community very safe. Also wanted to let you guys know that definitely, my dear friends that work for the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railway totally understood that you guys don't want them blowing their horn right near the area where the rail yard is, and they totally agreed. And I do understand how important it is to keep that area pretty much quiet because there's a lot of people that are working at that area. And I'll let Ernie and Humley and Fred know that they are, will surely do the best they can. And I do want to say that I do live on 500 Lashley, Unit 42. Forgot to say that, sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to let you guys know that definitely, I was wondering if we could definitely try to get a preschool or something that is very important to our community that would be on 100 and Main Street. I know that place that is out there that surely has been abandoned without any trucks or anything like that. So I'm asking you guys if we should definitely build a little preschool over there for the area of 100 and Main Street or give it time. So I'm asking you, Mayor, to think about that because the people of Longmont should have something like that over there on 100 and Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm Bob Collins, and I live at 1608 Tulip Court, and I am a member of the NGLA, Neighborhood Group Leaders Association, and we have been the recipients of two previous grants, one where we beautified an area and another where we put up signs marking our area, our homeowners' association of West Point Village. We are hoping to get a grant from you tonight, kind of confident that we might. And thank you for doing this. I think it's a benefit to everyone. The neighborhoods that participate look better, and the city looks better. So thank you very much for keeping this going.
And thank you.
I am Ruth Denhard, and I live at 131 East 9th Avenue, and we've lived there for 26 years, and I'm also part of the NGLA, and so here to thank you for the neighborhood improvement grants. We're going to have a playground upgrade in the south part of our park, and has never been upgraded since we have. been upgraded since we've lived there, so we're really excited. There's a lot of kids in our neighborhood, a lot of families, young kids, and so we're really excited about it, and just thank you for the opportunity that we have to apply for those grants. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
You ready?
All right, I guess we're ready for ordinance 2nd reading.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on your agenda, second reading, is ordinance 2013-07, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Industrial Pre-Treatment. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this, but we do have staff in the audience to answer questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council members before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion at this time? Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move ordinance 2013-07 on second reading for approval.
All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, we have your consent agenda next. Item 9A is Resolution 2013-20, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the 2013 intergovernmental agreement for bus service between the City of Fort Collins and the City of Longmont. Item 9B is Resolution 2013-21, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for forest stewardship activities at Button Rock Preserve. Item 9C is Resolution 2013-22, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its youth core program. Item 9D is Resolution 2013-23, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District consenting to agreement to pay for rights-of-way as provided by Southern Water Supply Project allotment agreements. Item 9E is Resolution R. 2013-24, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for a state aviation grant to install perimeter fencing at the Vance brand municipal airport. Item 9F is Resolution 2013-25, authorizing a mutual aid agreement with Boulder County and the city of Boulder regarding a Boulder County hazardous material response plan. Item 9G is Resolution 2013-26, authorizing a mutual aid agreement with Frederick Firestone Fire Protection District for firefighting and other emergency services. Item 9H is appoint members to the Affordable Housing Technical Review Group. Item 9A is approved $53,350 allocation for 2013 Neighborhood Improvement Program grant funding. Item 9J is Resolution 2013-27, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the St. Green Valley School District for an art in public places contract. Item 9K is approved and authorized submission of an application for U.S. Department of Justice Grant Office on Violence Against Women in the amount of $379,039 for supervised visitation and safe exchange grant program. And Item 9L is our legislative items. The first is a motion to support House Bill 131080 concerning modifications to the Colorado Aircraft Manufacturer New Employee Income Tax Credit, and the second one is a motion to support Senate Bill 13181 concerning the funding of Colorado Water Conservation Board Projects. Staff does not have the need to pull any of these items.
Okay. Councilmember Whit?
I would like to move the consent agenda. I'm waiting for Brian Badley to say, oh, wait.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm good, I'm good.
I guess I would like to pull one item. Could we pull and discuss Item L?
Okay, I would like to move the consent agenda minus Item L.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, the legislative update, Senate Bill 20202, which is related to increasing the inspection frequency, you know, obviously it's going to require more inspectors. I've been asked if I would testify on that, and I think it's a good bill because it, you know, the one weakness of COGCC is it only had 17 inspectors for 47,000 wells, and you know, if you're going to regulate that industry, you need, you know, if you go through the math, that's one inspection every three or four years, and you need to, yeah, every four years, and that's just not adequate. And I think everybody will agree, you know, just across the board, that if you want to have a regulatory body, you need more inspections than once every four years. So, I would like to be able to support that bill as the city council, so I would like to get, you know, weigh in and see if everybody else agrees with me or not. So, anyway, I'd like to make a motion that I have the support of the city council to support Senate Bill 202. Okay, any further discussion with council members? Sandy, would you like to make statements or speak on that?
Sure, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. When I took a look at Senate Bill 202, I did reread it again just to make sure that I had all my own questions answered. Under the legislative intent piece, it says that it would be inspections for all the new wells, but then when I re-looked at how the legislation actually fits into the current law, it would be, would require inspection of every well every year, specifically taking a look at high-risk wells that are either in urban areas or near schools or those types of things. And so I confirmed that with Senator Jones's office this evening as well, so, as were some of the questions that I think we had about it. I would like to remind the council that up to this point, you have decided to remain neutral and just monitor oil and gas bills. We did see the first four of these, starting with Senate Bill 202, and then there were three others that I forwarded to you as well that came in just yesterday. So, certainly it is the council's prerogative whether they would like to take any position on any of these bills. None of these bills speak about them, not speak about them. It is completely the council's policy decision to do so.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think more inspectors is good. I heard that this has a fiscal note of $7 million. That concerns me a little bit, and I know that they've just proposed to add 10 more inspectors, but I have no problem at all with you supporting the bill and testifying for more inspections.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I have gone on record as saying that we need more inspectors. How it's paid for by the state, the state needs to figure that out, but I believe, and I've gone on record here and on radio, saying that more inspections need to occur. This will be the only bill that I, regarding oil and gas, that I will support. So, there you go.
Councilmember Whit?
I was just going to mention in regards to what Mayor Proten mentioned, since we are going to be having several bills introduced, it could be that we're setting a precedent that we are going to take a position, so we're going to have to, if we do take a position on this, it seems like we're going to be asked to take a position on every single oil and gas bill that comes up. So, just keep that in mind. I think that everybody would agree that having good monitoring is essential, but do we want to, do we want to start down that road?
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think we take them as they come, and what we heard a lot in testimony from our citizens last year when we were devising the ordinance was that there was a lack of oversight and a lack of inspections, just the physical inability of the number of inspectors they had to be able to get to the wells to even take a quick drive-by. And I think that having the mayor have a green light to take a look and represent doubt and do some testimony would perhaps be an affirmative action on our part and not construed as a negative at all. So, I support the motion.
Councilmember Badley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think it's a good idea. I like it always when our state representatives are trying to figure out what needs to be done in order to make us safe and give us more jobs and all that kind of stuff. However, I continue, after well over a year, to be just kind of, I don't know, disappointed in our state legislature. While I appreciate their efforts, the real issue continues to be well-location and how we're going to solve the problem. And I think that, I think it's great that we have more inspectors. I would support that as well, but what I cannot understand is why the state just doesn't go ahead and buckle down and solve the problem. It would make my life and our lives a heck of a lot easier. And so, although, again, so, support or not support, I'm going to remain neutral on these, just simply because, not solving the problem. We need the ability here locally to be able to communicate in a way that we can figure out where these wells are going to go, and they're not in our neighborhoods. So, until that comes along, I don't think there's really any, we've hashed this, we've hashed this topic to death. So, until that happens, I really don't have anything else to say.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, more inspectors is definitely a good thing, but what's the right number? How many are they going to hire? Is it two? Is it 10? Is it 100? What's the right number? And if every well needs to be inspected at least once a year, that's a lot of new inspectors. And how will it be paid for? Well, it is our problem because ultimately it's the taxes that we pay that goes to pay for that, so we need to be mindful for every action we take, there's definitely a reaction or a consequence.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is there a way that we can give you our blessing in testifying and remain neutral? I don't know if there is or not. Does that take the guts out of it? Yeah, yeah, all right.
So, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Councilmember Finley, technically, any one of you can speak on behalf of yourselves at any time without any consent from the council. But I think what the legislature is looking for is that official support position, so does it take the teeth out of it? You know, not, not a ton. The mayor can speak on the mayor's behalf as long as he's clear about that, but there is something different to be able to stand up and testify and say, on behalf of the citizens of Longmont and the city of Longmont, this is the position. So, you can not give him permission, and he can still go down and testify on behalf of the mayor as long as he just indicates that that's his own position and not the position of the council.
And, you know, I do agree at this point with Councilmember Santos that on the other issues that are brought up, even though I personally like some of the merits in those issues, that as the city council, we should remain neutral at this point till we get more information or, you know, we decide to overwhelmingly support one or two of them, but at this meeting tonight, I'm not pushing to do anything but this one.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, as we are seeing more of these oil and gas bills, I will continue to update you on the bills as they come in so that you can see them right away, and I will treat any bills that come in as we will continue to be neutral on those unless otherwise directed by the council. So, I'll keep sending them to you, including in the packets, and then if at some point you decide that you'd like to bring one up, any one member can bring that up for an official position at any time. The only exception to that is if there was by some miracle a legislative piece that mirrored exactly your oil and gas regulations, which you have already created and supported, and so that's the only time that there would be one that would be a recommendation of support in that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Whit?
I'll just say that, we need to work on these microphones. I'll support this, but I think from a policy perspective, it's probably the wrong way to go. But if you feel very strongly about this, then I'll vote for it, but I think from a policy standpoint, it's probably not wise, but if you feel strongly, I'll support you.
Thanks for your comments. All right, I guess no further comments. Let's put it to a vote. Okay, let's vote. Okay, clear the, okay, passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, please don't forget the other two bills that we asked you to support on behalf of the Water Board and the Airport Advisory Board.
We support.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, I've gotten one.
Councilmember Whit?
I would like to move Item L. That, that's it, right?
Yeah. All right, let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the general business item A, water supply and drought management update, Ken Houston will make that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Ken Houston, Water Resources Administrator for the City of Longmont. We are appearing before you tonight to give you another update on our water supply and drought management efforts. As, as I think you've heard over the news media, Colorado does continue in a drought, and so we're closely monitoring our water supply, and we like to periodically bring information to both council and the citizens on where we are with our water supply and what our current plans are. As you may remember, in February, we did our last update, and at that time, we were able to report that Button Rock had 13,800 acre feet of storage in it, which was quite good for the month of February. Today, we have a photo of the same location. We currently have 13,300 acre feet in Button Rock, and that is about 1,000 acre feet above the long-term average for Button Rock. We've been watching and shepherding that water very closely this winter, so we're happy to report that we are slightly above average in our water reserves. A little bit more concern, this is the current drought monitor. As you can see, Colorado, the entire state of Colorado remains in every, from a severe to an exceptionally severe drought. This has, when you go back in the maps, it's slightly decreased on the outside of that drought, i.e. Oregon and Missouri, but the center of the country remains in a drought, and that's reflected in Colorado's snowpack. Just wanted to briefly highlight the, the history of the snowpack this year. This was the snowpack we brought to council in December. As you can see, the heavier dark black line on the bottom is the 2013 water year, and you can see the dry, extremely dry, from late November, October through early December, we really weren't getting any moisture at all in the mountains. That really is what put us behind this year. Then in December, we started to have a few snowstorms that helped things come along. Last month, in February, we continued to increase the snowpack, but because of the early season lack of snowfall, we still are well below. This line, the line that it's tracking along right now, the red line, was 2002, our last, you know, one of our worst drought years, so you can see it's, it was still trying to recover, but it has a long ways to go, and this is today's snowpack. Two things to see, even though we've continued actually at a fairly normal increase in snowpack, again, because of the early snow, lack of snow, we're still well behind, we're just almost tracking identical to 2002 for our snowpack. The green line right below the average line is last year's snowpack. We actually did fairly well up to about the first of March last year, and then it literally turned off, and you can see the snowpack last year melted out quite rapidly, to a point late in April, it was the worst snowpack on record. out quite rapidly. To a point late in April, it was the worst snowpack on record. We're hopeful this year that we'll continue. And that's the importance of these late spring storms of continuing to increase our snowpack. The average peak is actually April 28th. So we have about a month left to continue to increase. Lack of snow in that month, of course, would do what happened last year. So right now, we're very low, but the, the short-term forecasts are good and we're certainly hopeful. The Colorado River graph is very similar. Again, had a very dry start to the season. It is actually not quite as good as the South Platte. On the, on the west side, our, our CBT and when you tap water supplies, for a good portion of this year, it was actually tracking as, as the worst on record. Finally, this weekend, it, it broke above the worst and we're, we're just better about it. But we're hopeful to get slightly more. A little bit of concern of this is that the peak on the west slope is, is earlier. Its average peak date is April 10th. It doesn't tend to get the spring up slopes that help us on the South Platte side. So we have very little time to catch up. Table A is the city's tracking of our actual water rights and yield that we get from those. The one change we have from the last update is in the 2013 year, the CBT quota declaration, we decreased from 60% to 50%. While we still believe there may be a 60% quota, there is discussion right now of where and what that quota will be set at the Northern Colorado Conservancy District. And they'll actually set that quota in April. So our next update, we'll be able to report what the actual quota is set at. But because of how dry it's continuing on the west slope, we felt prudent to do that. With that adjustment, we also had one other water right that we're confident enough to include in this year's yield that we actually are staying right at about 137%. As you may recall, our water supply and drought management plan calls for a level one drought at 135% below. So we're right on the bubble. We still, we, we look two years out, both 2013, 2014, and in both years, we're above 135%. But in both years, we're again, right at the bubble. So we are continuing to manage the water supply in a sustainable conservation level. But because we are so close to that 135%, we have taken a few measures in our municipal operations. The first is a mandatory, and really this, we're preparing for level one in case we're, we're just to decide to enter that level. The first is a mandatory 10% reduction in municipal use for all non-critical sports fields. We do have a few critical sports fields that we will continue to water fully this year. But all of the water use of municipal water use will be reduced by 10%. That effort has already started. The second is we are delaying startup of all irrigation systems until April 15th. There are a couple caveats to that. The first is that we're going to be ready so that on April 15th, unless we get good moisture, we'll be able to start irrigation. The second is we will be doing testing. You know, you just can't turn all the systems on in one day. So between now and then, our crews will be doing testing. So citizens will occasionally see sprinklers going and some, some sprinkling going on. So, and then the third is that there is some limited irrigation on the golf courses, on like the tees and the greens and those types of real high use, high value areas that do need that initial early watering. But overall, we're, we're waiting till April 15th and would actually ask that the citizens also wait until April 15th to turn on their own personal irrigation systems because really the grass can, there is sufficient moisture that it can, can go until then. And then the, the last thing is we are looking closely at our summer recreational programs and I'll go through that in just one second. The other thing we're doing is continuing to increase our public information efforts. At page 333 of the city's council packet, we included eight best watering practices that we would like to highlight for the citizens. Wait, wait to water the lawns until April, only water twice a week, no watering between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. during the heat of the day. When it rains, you know, track that and cut back on your watering, check for leaks, let your grass grow slightly longer, water lawn, water your plants, you know, and your trees when they need it and not everything. And then install low water landscape efficiency plants. So we're, we're suggesting that the citizens, you know, look at all the areas they can to conserve water this year. The second is we're continuing to work with Boulder County Conservancy and the city to send out a consistent message from all the water providers in our area. We're also looking at teaming up with some of the North Metro area water providers as well so that that message is consistent. The, the last thing on some of our public relations is that this week is National Fix a Week Leak. It's kind of a nationwide effort to remind citizens to check their, their plumbing, check their fixtures, check their toilets, make sure there are no leaks. A leak is, if you could pass that around, leaks are one of the easiest ways to conserve water because, you know, nobody really wants a leak. I'm passing around some dye tabs and kind of as a challenge I would like to make to city council. These are for, you put one, there are two tablets in each pack, so enough for two toilets. You put one in the toilet tank and just let it sit there and dissolve. And then if your toilet is leaking, you'll see it show up, show up in the bowl. Pretty easy. We actually have a number of these at the city's service center at 1100 South Sherman. So any citizens who would like to do the same thing and take that challenge, please go by and pick one up and participate in the National Fix Leak Week. Going back to the final kind of city effort we're doing, we are closely monitoring the recreational impacts of the drought. There's three areas I'd like to highlight tonight. Our spring sports scheduling, because we're not initiating irrigation as soon this year as we normally would, we've informed the sports, different groups, the soccer clubs and baseball leagues and stuff, that if, if the turf is taking a little bit of a beating this year or it gets too dry, you know, we might have to curtail some of the sport activity. Probably most likely practice, the, the sports activities tend, the games tend to happen on the critical sports fields, but the practices tend to happen on the neighborhood parks. And so we want to make sure that we don't overstress the grass this early. So we have notified those. Our crews will be watching closely how those fields are doing. And if necessary, we'll let the, we may have to cut back. We got really lucky. The first week of March had the snowstorm, so didn't have games going on. But that put a little moisture in the fields. And so this last weekend, we're able to have normal sports activities. The second is Lake Macintosh water levels. And Lake Macintosh is currently at seven foot depth with 1,100 acre feet in it, which is a little less than half of its 2,500 acre feet capacity. It's highly unlikely Lake Macintosh will come in priority because it's one-day junior to Union Reservoir. And Union Reservoir has a huge hole to fill this year. You know, probably won't fill even Union. So just kind of a, another reminder that Lake Macintosh will be fairly low for most of this summer period. And the final one is Union Reservoir South. It's currently at 16.7 foot in depth, which is 5,700 acre feet out of its approximately 13,000 acre feet capacity. So it's well, a little bit less than half full. We're getting a little bit of water in it right now. And it's probably the one that I get asked more than any other, you know, are we, you know, what's Union going to do? Are we going to be able to have the boat ramp? We're about a foot below the boat ramp. And so boats can't be launched at this point. It'll take knowing enough to get to the boat ramp, but up, up high enough on the boat ramp to launch boats. We just, you know, you just don't know. Whether or not we get any water in there this year is going to depend on the weather between now and about mid-May. We certainly are going to hope that we get some. But if it gets dry and the direct flows come on, Union won't, won't get any storage at all. If we get a little bit of moisture, it'll not only help the river, but it'll keep the dregs off a little longer and we might get a little in there. So we'll be coming back in May. And when we do that, we'll be able to report more accurately on exactly what Union Reservoir has done. However, to anticipate that, the Parks and Recreation Department, as they sell annual permits at Union Reservoir, they've included this year kind of a little disclaimer, just to make sure everybody knows that the level is down. You know, that if, if they buy a season pass, they have to understand it's down, that the boat ramp may, may not be available all year. Still a wonderful place. You can go out and shoreline fish. You can go out and enjoy the area. Just a beautiful area to be even, even at that current level. But just want to, just make sure that everybody understands that that impact is going on. The one thing we would like to talk to council about and get your concurrence, I would like to talk about our historical leaseback and surplus water rental program, where we are with that right now. And unless council otherwise directs us, we've made some decisions that we'd like to let you know about. As you can imagine, Longmont's first priority is to deliver water to our water treatment plants for potable water use. That's really what the business we're in. That's, that's where we focus our, our efforts. During years of plenty and even during average years, Longmont does have additional water beyond that amount we need for our water treatment plants. And so we have both a historical leaseback and a surplus water rental program. The difference between those two is they're all surplus water above and beyond what we need for our water treatment plant. The historical leaseback is water that when, when somebody annexes, they have to dedicate their water to the city that's historical on the land. But there might be a time of, from a short time to even years, where between when they annex and when they develop, that we don't want the property to go into weeds. So we allow the property owner to lease their historical water back on that property until it develops and needs that water for, for potable water use. And that is actually set in Longmont's municipal code. It's section 14.05.080. So all these surplus water rental programs, we take the, the surplus water and we have a number of different projects that we do with those. The first is in a contractual agreement with St. Green School District. We entered that into that, come back in the 1970s. We lease our first, it's approximately 1,000 acre feet, but some of it is non-transferred water. So it's not that much of our water portfolio. But the first block of water, we lease the St. Green School District. That actually makes a lot of sense because if they don't use that raw water or that surplus water, then they have to turn on their tap. So really, it's, it's kind of a wash for Longmont, you know, even though, excuse me, even though we give them the water, it, it helps reduce that potable water use. The second block is the historical leaseback because that is by code. And so we would, we would continue that. That's on properties around Longmont. The third is a surplus water rental that we do with city properties. An example is the properties around Union Reservoir that were purchased for the enlargement and some of our open space properties. Those properties have their historic water that was historically on that land. And that is included in the leases when we lease those properties. But some of those properties are a little bit, were always historically for, you know, 100 years, a little bit water short. And so to help keep the viability of those farms, we lease some surplus water in years when they have it to those properties. And the fourth is, once we've kind of met all those, what I'll call kind of city-type needs, we put, we have a cooperative agreement with the St. Green Left Hand Water Conservancy District to lease excess water to local agricultural producers in the community. We've looked at our water supply. And if I can go back to table A, because it's a little easier to, to look at this, when you look at it in the numbers, in, in the top half that is charted is, is our water supply and the bottom half is our demand. If you look down in 2013, the very bottom number, we have there's less water rental and leases. As you can see last, in 2012, that was 7,000 acre feet. In 2002, it was 1,400 acre feet because of that drought year. This year, we are projecting 1,000 acre feet. And that 1,000 acre feet represents two blocks of water, the, the water that we would lease to the school district and the water we would lease back to the historical, leaseback pursuant to the municipal code. Those, those two together, the, the bigger block of that is about 500 acre feet for the historical leaseback. Staff, you know, at that 1,000 acre feet, we're still above the 137, 135% for sustainable water conservation level. If we were to go above the 1,000 acre feet and increase additional surplus water, while it's surplus, it would bring us below that 135%. We'd have to start looking at further watering restrictions. So as such, staff is proposing to, we'd like to make a, a decision and bring it to council tonight, that we will continue for this year, now there's sufficient water, we believe, this year for a contractual agreement with the school district and our historical leaseback. Knowing that, you know, if we were to pull back on the historical leaseback, there would be a little bit more water. We could, we'd put it into storage. But that kind of puts it in perspective. But the, the second two, the surplus water rental program for city properties and surplus water rental to local agriculture communities, we just don't feel we have sufficient water supplies this year and would like to notify those two user blocks that we will not be doing that program. So anyway, I'd like to conclude with that if, if council concurs. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken, I need to say it in here. How much, what's the amount that, how much revenue do we get from the school district?
Boy, that, that, for CBT water, we, we charge $35 an acre foot, which is the, in the 30, 35 is the going rate. That's for about 150, 200 acre feet. Our policy is to charge the ditch assessments plus a 15% administrative fee. So for the remainder of those, of the leases. And that's, I have to apologize, I don't know that number off the top of my head. But it's not really a setup as a money maker.
No, no, I'm just curious. I mean, are we charging the same amount that we would charge on the agricultural lease?
We go for the CBT, for the, the ditch assessments are typically in the $5 to $10 acre foot range, so much, much, much lower.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
So, Ken, I just made one notation, wanting to know a little bit more about balancing out the historic leaseback and the, the surplus that we normally lease to the agricultural community. Where do we strike a balance where we're still able to keep and establish a good tenant relationship and support our community value around agriculture and having some of those fields still productive? And the historic leaseback? Because is the historic leaseback in general used for watering the land for just anything to grow? Or there are ag purposes that, you know, in this in-between time zone where it's not developed and they have that, that leaseback?
Yes, Mayor, and Councilmember Robinson. That really is the genesis behind the historical leaseback program. Typically, the only historical leaseback, typically it occurs on property that hasn't had any development at all. And it's actually still in productive agricultural production. So actually, most people don't even realize it's annexed property because it's, you know, usually a cornfield or, or, you know, a grass hay or something like that. And they're, they're typically larger blocks of property. We really... And they're typically larger blocks of property, we really don't have too many small properties, and most of them are right on the out, right on the edges, two farms are north of Highway 66, one's out across the street from, you know, west of Silver Creek High School, another one's out east of Longmont by Union Reservoir, they're properties that are just on the, you know, on the outside edge, so, yeah, they, and they really, actually, almost all of them have tenant farmers, and so, those tenant farmers, some of them are the same tenant farmers we have on our property, and so, it is a good win-win for both of us, but, but we, so that's one of the reasons we do try to, that has a slightly higher priority than when you put it on the general agricultural market, you know, it can go, you know, 10 or five or 10 miles outside of the city, and we want to make sure those immediate lands around us are kept in ag production.
And that's what I, the kind of balance I was looking for. Could we, though, would it be too big a problem, just in our information packet, section of the packet, every month or so, just give us a quick, you know, things are going well with what we set up, or if we're hearing from people, or if you think that there could be a point where we're in a level-two drought situation, that the, we're going to have to look at something with the historic leaseback program? I mean, it could, things could go bad, I mean, we're not Massachusetts, they're getting whacked, but, you know, we're not, it doesn't look like we're getting anything of what they're predicting for storms, so, my concern is that we keep monitoring the situation, and if it wouldn't be too much trouble, you know, once a month, just having a quick, two paragraphs saying, basically, covering these four items that you've outlined for us, the surplus, you know, the St. Green lease, the historic leaseback, and then the other two items on the following page, you know, just saying that we're still on track with the discontinuing of the additional lease amounts above the historical, and then, you know, I guess, you know, the last two items are not likely to change, but in one way, if we do have extra water, could we add those back, those two items, the last two items back in, and could we look at the historic leaseback if things get, you know, a level-two drought?
Yes, Council Mayor Robinson, we actually would be happy to do that, and report on those. I would like to say that our next report to council will be the first week of May, when we come back with our, we'll actually be bringing the annual water supply and drought management plan for 2013, 14, at that point, and we'll certainly report to you on that. One of the reasons we wanted to make this, was one of the earlier decisions tonight, is because for most of the farmers, they're really at a do-or-die point, they have to know, are they going to start, are they going to order corn seed, or are they going to order dryland wheat seed? And, you know, they'll make their cropping decisions, they would have liked to have made them, you know, a couple weeks, a month ago, so they grow the seed, but this is kind of about the latest, and once they've made those decisions, those won't change, but you're absolutely right, we do continue to monitor Table A, we continue to monitor that water supply, and especially in years like this, we'll be giving you regular updates so that you have those, and we certainly can, if, you know, the weather can change, and if it did change, then we could re-look at some of those surplus water rental decisions.
Thanks, I just, you know, people do ask you about these things, and even just having a couple of paragraphs once a month in the information section is helpful. Thank you.
Council Mayor Robinson.
I just want to make sure that my dog won't die if I put this in my toilet.
I don't think so. Much tries.
But no, he will not.
Or how many do you need to use your dog?
I'd like to add an unofficial number nine to best practices, and that would be artificial pet turf. It's the greatest thing from sliced bread. No mowing, no fertilizing, it's awesome.
Or no fertilizers. What's your name's name?
They love, they're jealous, because my green, my lawn is green, and theirs is brown. All right, well, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've been going pretty strong, why don't we take a quick 10-minute break before we hit the next two items?[905.13]
I guess we're on general business item B now.
Mayor Coombs, that's Council Direction regarding the November ballot issue for bonds to finance wastewater treatment plant improvements, and Bob Allen's here to make a presentation.
All right, Bob Allen, Operations Division Manager, Public Works Natural Resources. Tonight I'm here to seek your direction on our continued financial planning for capital improvements that are required in our sewer fund, or wastewater plant specifically. So, I'll be brief here, most of our information, I think, is pretty detailed in the communication. So I just wanted to kind of reposition your brains to where we're at here quickly. If you recall, last year, we discussed three major areas for improvements. We have new ammonia limits in our permit, and we have to build new structures to address that more stringent limit. We have infrastructure that is at the end of its life cycle and needs to be renewed. And then we have some treatment byproducts that the infrastructure requirements that we need to address. One was the methane recovery project that is a project that would allow us to recover the gas on-site instead of burning it off, and that is something that actually will pay for itself in about 10 years, and then biosolids and continued odor control. And we had a cost that we showed you last year at 41.4 million, and our intention and the rates that you approved last year would reflect that those projects be funded by cash at 13.4 million and by bonds at 28 million, or by debt. We showed you this summary of our operating fund, and you can see in years 2014 and 2015 in bold that we would have bond proceeds that would make up our revenues in those years for a total of 28 million that would be required to fit within the current rate structure and fund these projects. If we didn't have the bonding approved, then we would have to look at other options. One might be increasing rates to cash finance the project. So, the function of the bonds would be to allow us to just mitigate the rate impact and spread it out over more years, which is traditional for this industry. So, next steps, we are initiating the design process. We're currently working on developing a request for qualifications so that we can create a list of consultants that we could work with, and then we'll develop a request for proposals with that shorter list of contractors, consultants. And then, we need to specifically tonight, need your direction on whether or not we proceed with preparing a ballot question for August for a bond issue. And then also, if you give us that approval, we need to start with the public information, and we would spend about $10,000, somewhere in that range, over the next year, on that public information program. Questions?
Councilmember Lewison.
I think we've been working on this for quite some time, and I think we're all in agreement that it has to be done, and so I would move that we direct staff to begin the public information process and to prepare a ballot question for August.
For November.
It says August.
Oh, ballot question for August, for the ballot, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Lewison.
Would any part of our project be eligible for the state revolving loan fund?
It's possible. That's a competitive process, and it's one that takes some time to get in queue for. Probably, in our case, we don't have as much time as you would normally have. We are looking at that possibility, we're not sure what the rates are, but that is a possibility and something we'll continue to look at.
I mean, it's a program that is at jeopardy of being defunded constantly, however, my understanding is there is still some funding.
That's correct.
And I don't know, do you have any idea across the state, I guess everybody's in the same boat about the new requirements, the permit requirements, but do you have a feeling for how much money we could acquire from the state revolving loan fund?
Mayor and council, I do not know what the opportunities are there. I'd have to do some research to discover.
And then, I asked, Jim Golden is not, oh, Jim is here, hi. I was just wanting to know if, this is not something that would be your area of expertise, these are bonds, the $28 million bonding would be tax-exempt bonds, where they would be a tax-exempt muni bond, is what I'm guessing Jim's coming down because he knows the question I'm going to ask.
May, whom's members of council, that would be our intention currently.
And so, there's been a lot of discussion, and there's actually some movement in the Senate around the tax reform issues, and likely that there is a likelihood that the tax exemption for muni bonds is in jeopardy. So what would, do you have any feeling for what the cost increase on the bond issue would be?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, in general, it's about 100 basis points type of an increase for a taxable bond versus a non-taxable bond. So, that would be the potential impact, and then it really comes back down to the individual bond and its own rating and such, but we would estimate 100 basis points.
Which is maybe about 3%.
So we're working on a bond issue today for the sewer bond, that we're looking at rates at the 3.5 to 3.75 level, so it could be, you know, 4.75 or so.
Okay, so about a percentage point or more. And then, would there be a difference in cost of issuance if it's a taxable bond as far as, than tax exempt?
It'd be cheaper, actually, we wouldn't have to get the opinion for tax exemption.
Right.
But it wouldn't be a major difference, I doubt.
Okay, but still, 1% in the cost is a chunk of change over the number of years.
Yeah, we'd have to run pro forma's at a higher percentage.
So, if you don't mind, since this has become such a big issue, if you don't mind keeping in the back of your head those comparison numbers as we move forward, because it's very good communication to our senators to let them know for a bond of $28 million that would allow us to become in compliance with new EPA and other requirements, that the additional costs to our taxpayers would be X, Y, Z on this kind of bond issuers, I would really appreciate it, because, you have those numbers? I don't know how to get those.
You can run those numbers.
Yeah, that would be so helpful, because I plan on calling Senator Bennett's office either tomorrow or the next day, and it'll be great to have those numbers.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any further questions for Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I, this is just a matter of just kind of going through the motions, we need to do it. You guys have put in the work, the recommendation, I don't think we have any choice. And so, I wish we didn't have to raise money through bonds, but if we want to keep up with the new requirements, and if we want to have continued plumbing in our city, should probably do it. So, I will be voting for this, if there's any doubt. Pro toilet. Pro toilet.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Jim, I'm sorry to bring you back down. For those of us that met with the senators and the congressmen, we advocated for this in Washington DC. The question I have is, when would be, if the voters voted for this, when will we be issuing these bonds?
Well, actually, Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'll have to turn to Bob, it's going to get back to the construction as well. We could issue them as soon as, within 90 to 120 days after the election in November, but we also want to make sure that we've spent all of the construction funds that we have on hand, which I think we do believe will be at that point, which, Bob is shaking his head yes, but that's something we always check anyway as we get closer to that point. So, we don't want to issue bonds until we're within a reasonable time span to spend money.
Right, and it's my, you know, my understanding that this matter regarding the taxable muni bonds might be some part of some discussion on a grand bargain at the federal level between Congress and the President, which, everyone keeps talking about a grand plan, but from talking with the staff members and a few members of Congress, there is no grand plan, so, yeah, Sandy's shaking her head, there's no grand plan. So, you know, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of movement, whether, there might be movement in the Senate, there probably won't be movement in the House, and, because, you know, unfortunately, there's no congeniality anymore between the two bodies. So, you know, there might be something just to watch, you know, watch, but I wouldn't, unless there's a whole lot of movement and there's some sort of, again, grand plan, you know, we talked to Senator Bennett's office, Councilmember Lewison, his staffer, unfortunately, you weren't there at the meeting, was talking about a five-year budget deal. There's no way you get a five-year budget deal, because you can't see how the ebbs and flows of the economy. So, you know, that was laughable that it was even mentioned. You know, I remember Chairman David Dyer of the House Rules Committee was trying to get biannual budgeting, I know biannual budgeting is done in Fort Collins, you know, that might be something we want to look at, but a five-year budget deal, it's not possible. So, this muni bond issue might just be something to, it might be something, it might be nothing, but it looks like it's going to be a whole lot of nothing, so, you just might want to just keep, as Councilmember Lewison said, just keep in the back of your head, but I'd put it back in the far corners of your head. Not a lot of room up there.
All right, thank you. So let's go ahead and vote. You got a motion? Okay, it looks like you have your direction, Alan, it's seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is a review of the Art in Public Places program, and Lauren Greenfield is here to make that presentation.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Coombs, City Councilmembers, my name is Lauren Greenfield, I'm the Art in Public Places Administrator for the city, and I have with me a couple of commissioners, Emily Patterson and Andrea Mathwick. And I'm here this evening to present a summary of information that you received in a packet, as well as some pictures, to supplement all of that information and give you a brief history and overview of the Art in Public Places program for the city. This piece, is the first piece installed for Art in Public Places, oh, thank you. In 1987, this ordinance was adopted, and most of you recognize many of the early pieces, and we're going to go through some of the later pieces in the collection as well. Funding for Art in Public Places comes from a 1% of capital improvement projects of $50,000 or more. This is common to almost all of the municipalities that do have Art in Public Places programs. In Colorado, the 1%, there are a few exceptions, as you can see here. Oops. I think it is.
Thank you.
We have 15 Art in Public Places commissioners, each of whom serves a three-year term, or multiple three-year terms, and are appointed by City Council. And the commissioners help out a lot, as I am the only part-time staff person, with the site selection, the guidelines, appointing selection panel members who are the citizens, and establishing the whole process for the program, determining whether artwork that may go in the city is programmatic to a specific department or division, or whether it needs to go through the Art in Public Places process. And they look at donations and determine whether or not to accept them or decline them, and they approve selected artwork selected by the citizen selection panels, and assist me in many, many capacities. I want to tell you a little bit about the process of artwork selection. In Longmont, we are unique because the citizens select the artwork in Longmont, and it's an opportunity that every citizen whom I've spoken to really appreciates that opportunity to serve on a selection panel. We used to have a once-in-a-lifetime rule, now it's once every three years a citizen can serve, and they come in and look through sometimes hundreds and hundreds of images and familiarize themselves with the site or location that we're looking at, and work with a group of usually 11 citizens to select the artwork. More recently, we have looked to community members to assist in other ways as well. With the shock art project, we invite community members to come to the museum for a two to two-and-a-half week period so that they can vote for their favorite switchgear box art, which are then transferred onto the boxes themselves, and those are all local artists that participate in that. Selection panel members often represent communities or neighborhoods. If we're going to be placing artwork in a particular park, we try and get postcards out to the neighbors, and sometimes host a small get-together so that they can learn more about the project and have some input. They do submit an application, and it's a tougher task than it appears it might be, and I think they all appreciate it by the end of the process. The many benefits of Art in Public Places that we all see throughout our community every day, whether we're driving past one of the entryway sites going 60 miles an hour, whether we're taking a walk with our dog in the park, I think that we can all appreciate the uniqueness of the diversity of artwork that is here in our community. And again, the community involvement, we will be commissioning another five artists this year to paint five more switchgear boxes, and that call went out to artists today, and this morning I had people at the museum asking when it was going to be posted, and within an hour it was out. And these are some of the things that the selection panelists look for when they are assessing the artwork and whether it would be appropriate for our community. These are some of the words that fit every single criteria in every single project. And of course, our Art on the Move program, that started in 2006, brings anywhere from three to seven pieces of artwork on a rotating basis. Those pieces are installed each year in July, and we have a big dedication in conjunction with the July Art Walk. We always have three pieces at St. Stevens Plaza, and then we have, excuse me, other pedestals throughout the city, and we rotate artwork depending on what is submitted and what would be appropriate. As you see here, the piece in front of the Civic Center, which will be leaving in June, and this piece on the right is located at Isaac Walton Clubhouse inside, and those both will be leaving in July, June, I'm sorry. And evaluation and success is a hot topic right now with Art in Public Places administrators. There are a number of questions we ask ourselves, we ask the community and the commissions. How accessible is it? Are the artworks being maintained? Did the projects come in under budget and within the timelines as projected? And what is it contributing to Longmont and to whom? And we feel that we're doing pretty well in every regard in terms of self-evaluation and success, and we look at ourselves and compare to other communities that have similar These are some of the items that the Art in Public Places Commission members identified in the 2011 strategic plan, looking as far ahead as 2020, and what does our community look like in terms of artwork? And we've slowed down significantly in initiating new projects every year, but looking at programs like Art on the Move that bring in more pieces for fewer dollars, pieces like shock art that are employing more local artists and having more community involvement. As our maintenance, as our collection ages and grows, we are needing to put more resources into maintenance as well. And these are some of the other communities in Colorado that have similar Art in Public Places programs. We have a fantastic network of us that get together three or four times a year and discuss our successes, our challenges, and opportunities for collaborations altogether. Sharing artists' names and databases is huge, and we're working on developing something like that that we can all use together. And again, Art on the Move, this one on the right was, I think, one of the favorites that people are talking about all the time, where's the fork, and they miss it. It is on 287 in Lafayette, in case you're wondering, so it moved right down the street, although I believe it's moving from there this spring. And the piece on the left is called Lotus by Berthold Artists, and that is at the Waste and Diversion Center. And the functional artwork, the many bike racks that we've done around town have been fun, this one was installed at Sunset Pool shortly after they opened the new building two years, almost two years ago. And in response to the declining revenues, I think the commission has been really proactive in terms of, some of the things that I mentioned before, cutting down costs on initiating new projects, but looking at the projects that we have that are successful, working with community artists, many more calls to Colorado artists than national artists, keeping our monies local, more shock art, which everyone, we've had a tremendous response to the shock art program, Art on the Move and our Start Walking and Biking tours, which we initiated two years ago, which have been very successful and well-attended, just in terms of tours that walk or bike to several of the public art pieces in town, and they're organized in usually an hour to an hour and a half in duration. And of course, the partners and partnerships and collaborations that we've worked on. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Lauren, in the years, like, some of the larger pieces, have we, what is the percentage of the local artists that we have commissioned, have been commissioned?
Larger pieces, I guess, in terms of the definition of, we have two large pieces, those are the two entryway pieces. The one on the west side, the diagonart piece, was done by a Berthold artist. The one on the east side of town was done by a New Mexico artist. And then, under that, I guess, just in my head, the next largest commissioned project we have are the two pieces that are at the rec center that were done in conjunction with Quail Campus. One is Airplay, and one is Feather Flight. Those two together were done by a Boulder artist team, and I think that that project was, I want to say about 120,000 total, but don't quote me on that number, it was several years ago.
I guess the biggest, not complain, but the biggest question that I get from people I guess the biggest, not complain, but the biggest question that I get from people, and I know that it's, it is, none of these artists are from town. Now, the Shock Art, I love the Shock Art. You go around, you know, I always look for the next one. The Rubik's Cube out on Pace in '66, I think it's, you know, I'm a kid from the '80s. I think it's one of the greatest ones ever. But you look at the, you look and see the ones around town, whether it's the dinosaurs or the dolphins or whatever, I'm looking forward to seeing the next ones, and I'm glad those are being done either by students or local artists. But I think some of the bigger pieces, and this is just me speaking, you know, as a council member, but as a resident, and also hearing from residents themselves, some of the larger pieces need to be done by more local people. And these are our local dollars, and we're sending local dollars to artists that don't live here. I know that the big flak was, you know, Los Arcos, a guy from New Mexico. And whether we moved them or not moved them, and we were going to pay him or not pay him, and, you know, that was a big argument. And, you know, had it been a local artist, I think, however that is going to turn out, I think would have been a little bit more palatable. I understand there was a big misunderstanding in AIPP when this was originally brought up and what we wanted to discuss. I've had past members of council, past mayors say, you know, we fund AIPP at 1%, it should be less. Now, you know, we're going to be resetting the budget for 2014. And when we sat in here and we had the nonprofits in here, and basically, we couldn't guarantee them anything. You know, all bets, all bets are off. But for anyone to say that we're going to kill AIPP, I think, was not accurate. Art, whether I think, and I know I'm going to get the name wrong, Floral?
Floriano.
Thank you. Whether I think it looks like what it is, or some people will say it's Wile E. Coyote with the ears hanging, you know, coming out. Art is in the eye of the beholder, and I get that. Like, it's a conversation piece. And I've been to many ribbon cuttings for many pieces of art, you know, Arts in Public Places here in town, and they're all different, and I could look at them and go, wow, I didn't, I don't understand it, but now that I've actually seen it in the context of what the artist has said, I get it. So I want to see options about what's going to happen if funding, if 1% becomes 0.9% or if it goes from 1.1%. If it goes up, you know? I don't know. I need, what I want to see, I want to see the spreadsheet. You know, we saw spreadsheets for Housing and Human Services, whether, you know, this is what's going to happen if it goes up, this is what's going to happen if it goes down. Because again, I can't guarantee, I don't think anybody here on council can guarantee what's going to happen in 2014. The city managers told us, you know, in the next three to four, five years, we have a, what, a three to four million, five, three million dollar?
Probably.
Yeah. Budget deficit, we have to try to come up with. And, you know, we told those folks in the nonprofits, it might be you. The most critical, you know, people that need funding may not get it next year. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that art is not needed in this community, but we're going to have to make some really tough decisions. And again, I think AIP, again, AIPP is here to stay, I just don't know what funding will be. And again, whatever was said at the meeting that I wasn't at but thought all kind of flack for was wrong. Because in no way did I advocate for the termination of AIPP. And I tried to call you, and I talked, I got emails from members of the commission, and I made it very clear, that's not what I was advocating for. We need to look at the entire budget. So I'm actually glad we're having this conversation, to be able to lay it out along the line. And I know I'm taking up time, Marson, and those other people, but thank you for coming. And I look forward to seeing what the next pieces are coming, and I'm looking forward to seeing what Shock Art, the next pieces of Shock Art, because they are really cool.
I want to run my two cents here. I went to a really neat conference, it was actually at the Denver Zoo in a facility down there where they talked about what art and culture does to economic development in the community. And I was just so shocked at the correlation and what that really means to a community. So, you know, when you look at art, you have to look at the economic impact, because there is an economic, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate, you know, all that you do for this city. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm shocked. I'd be curious to, like, climb into your head as a staff member, and you guys give these presentations, and then we start talking to you, and you just sit there and smile. Awesome. Well done. I, Art in Public Places has kind of grown on me since I've been on council, as have the nonprofits in general. Sitting on the museum board, the library board, especially the Housing and Human Services Board has really given me an exposure that I was unaware of. I think that, I think there's all kinds of needs that a community has, and I think that, yeah, you've got your toilet needs, you've got your street needs, your light needs, you have your city staff, all over the place, needs. But I also think that the Art in Public Places, the reason why it's grown on me is because the more I serve on council, the more I'm aware of what's going on in the community. You drive around town, and it provides an element, an atmosphere. It's the difference between having a living room that's white paint and a old tube television stuck in the corner and a futon versus the same room with some vibrant colors, some cool artwork, and some, you know, modern furniture. And so I think that it really adds to our community. And sometimes, just because you're spending money doesn't necessarily mean it's a waste if it's not being spent in a way that it's going to be used in the traditional ways. And so I really commend you and the board and all the little pieces of art you see around town. And I also think that whether it's from out of town or in town, you know, if you focus too narrowly, you're going to have a household of a five-year-old, a six-year-old, and eight-year-old drawing crayon pictures, taking them off the fridge and posting them up all over town. That's my house, by the way. You know, that little artwork session happens like two or three times a week. So I mean, so I certainly would appreciate seeing local artists, but at the same time, I do appreciate the art and just commend you and thank you. And so, and I know Mayor Protem was trying to help and was trying to put your mind at ease, and in the event that he failed to do so, you know, I think it's important. I don't see Art in Public Places going anywhere either. And so, thanks for your work.
Thank you, Mayor Levinson.
I actually like having, when we do these really big entryway pieces, I think it's interesting for the search for an artist and a piece of art to be placed there, to be a nationwide search. First of all, it gives us more of a presence in the national art community, which is always a good thing. Plus, there are people that follow artists. I mean, you know, if you look at, Picasso didn't always keep his pieces in France or Spain. Alexander Calder didn't keep all of his pieces in the country he came from. They're all over the world, and people actually follow artists. And, you know, one of the big selling points for our visitors and Tourist Bureau is that we have this art collection, and people that might have seen these artists, nationally-known artists in other communities, could come to Longmont and say, well, gee, they have such-and-such artist piece in their collection as well. And there are people that are actually out there doing these little pilgrimages every vacation. So I think having a selection of local artists is great, but the national artists are great too, because they, they bring a different cachet to the community. And sometimes, you know, the citizens' panels are choosing these art pieces too, and they're acutely aware of the origin of the artist, are they not?
Councilmember Levinson, they are aware of the artists. Initially, when we show them all of the images, if we have 60 artists who have submitted, they are, they do not know all of the information as to where the artists are from, but once we start narrowing down, they are aware of where the artist is from and who that artist is.
And so, given the, you know, the preference and the citizens balancing everything, you know, ultimately, they're choosing on balance, you know, a local artist versus an artist from 10 miles or 100 miles or 500 miles away. And in the end, who knows? The national artist that comes here and does one piece might decide they'd rather live in Longmont because we're just so cool. So I really find there's a lot of value in this program, and it's a program of having public art consciously selected with all the community input is really a hallmark of a quality, quality-of-life element in the community as well. So I think it has more value than maybe first blush. I especially find it gets people engaged in the community in a different way when Councilmember Bagley is more engaged, and he doesn't appear to me to be the art connoisseur that maybe others of us might be. I don't. But I think that it's, having the citizens choose the art and the way the panels are selected, really is a different level of civic engagement that we're doing, and people take ownership of those pieces when they've had a hand in doing it. It gives them great pride in their community. So I think the program works on more than just 1% buys pieces of art.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Here I was thinking that we were just getting an update on all the cool things. I didn't know there was this undercurrent going on. And I would like to say that I, what I like to say is, whether I like the piece or I don't like the piece, what I love is that Longmont loves art. And that is our commitment, is that we love art. And there was a governor of a western state who said if he was put in charge of a cannibal island, he would straightaway build a theater because of its ability to civilize the people. And I think that art does that, and it doesn't have to be performance art, it can be other kinds of art. So I think that art is an integral part of our community and all communities, and so really appreciate the work that you do and also the commission members. I understand you're part-time, and that is a lot of work for part-time. So I understand how much your commissioners must help out. And so that's, we probably shouldn't ask for as much of you as we would a full-time employee with so much facts, figures, and whatnot, but I think that Longmont loves art, and this is how we demonstrate that. So appreciate all that you do.
I'm going to type in here real quick, because I did notice when you had listed cities that supported, you know, Art in Public Places, that Boulder was not on that list unless I didn't see it. So I guess I'm always proud when we're one step ahead of Boulder on anything.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I guess the one thing that we've asked other boards or other groups to do is that we've asked for, especially with the airport, with the Air Expo, we've asked for people to start looking for sponsor shows, whether, or donations of some sort. So has AIPP considered that?
Mayor Protem Santos, we have not considered financial sponsorships or, I guess, any kind of sponsorships. I mean, we have, I feel like we've done a lot of collaborations, and we've had some partnerships, but we have not reached out in terms of financial sponsorships.
Well, and the reason I ask, especially with the maintenance piece, you know, having gone around this big ball we call Earth and seeing things in other cities, whereas this is maintained by X company. You know, you're not selling out the piece itself, but you're at least giving acknowledgement to this company who might be helping with the repairs and maintenance of that one piece. It's just a thought. Or this piece was, I don't know, was brought, not brought to you by, but, you know, was brought in by this company. You know, it's just a thought. You know, the Air Expo is, you know, they have gone out and have solicited sponsors for the Air Expo, which helps, not only takes the burden off the city financially, it gets at least some of those other local businesses' names out there. It's just a thought. I mean, or friends of AIPP, you know, we have friends of the museum, friends of the library, something of that nature. That might be something to consider, especially with the ongoing, again, maintenance of those pieces. Just a thought.
Councilmember Levinson?
Sometimes it's difficult to run a program if you're looking, you're out there looking for sponsorship and you have one half-time employee that, I'm just trying to figure out how you would do a maintenance budget when sometimes, I mean, you know, frankly, years ago, I ran a community-based summer art program and got sponsorships, and then one year, lo and behold, one of the companies that had given me a grant decided to go into bankruptcy. And, you know, I was left high and dry with having to fund a portion of the program and, you know, wait for the bankruptcy to be settled, which never happened. So I think we have to kind of take a long view to see, we could perhaps look at raising money to look at a portion of maybe sponsorship, but to, you know, I'm not sure what that would look like and how we would, you know, budget for it in a program where we know that there are increased maintenance costs, and, for example, we don't know how the, from year to year, there could be some other damage to pieces due to harsh weather or other things.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Levinson, I get that. I'm trying to find some, you know, I'm trying to find other funding sources for AIPP, whether, you know, if we keep them at 1%, move them up 1.1, whatever. But again, I would like to see some sort of spreadsheet that shows that. But if there's difficulty with the maintenance, you know, operations and maintenance, the O and M of those pieces, there has to be some sort of other funding mechanism. Whether, you know, and again, how many board members, there's 15?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you're half-time for AIPP. So we have, and I'm sure some of those commissioners would be more than willing to try to help with that. There are other boards and commissions that have friends of, friends of the museum, I know Wes is back there, I see him, friends of the library, there are other organizations, I'm sure. Here's the framework of what we have. I'm trying to find solutions instead of trying to already put a downer on solutions, and I'm trying to help here. And instead of raining on a parade, let's try to say, hey, let's try to find other ways to bring revenue so this can be sustainable in the bad times and then also in the good times. You know, where we can have, you know, if there's a big piece that there's just not enough money for one year, let's say there's even a good year, and there's just, you need $2,000 more, the friends of AIPP can just come in and say, here's that extra $2,000, here you go for the project in 2015. There you go.
Mayor, council, if I can jump in?
So I'm trying to find solutions instead of raining So I'm trying to find solutions instead of raining on a parade, Councilmember Lovison. So be a part of the team.
If I can jump in, I think that's one of the things that we're looking at in the budget process, is looking at different ways to look at these types of situations and are there alternative revenue sources that we can bring to bear and provide the support for the staff members as we're moving through these types of discussions. Actually, the genesis of some of this is going to occur in the council retreat when we start working through some of these issues and providing the prioritization process and how we look at it. So this definitely is part of the overall budget process for the organization.
Thank you. So we've talked a lot about maintenance. Do you have a reserve already in place for maintenance?
Councilmember Samori, we budget, it's not an exact percentage, approximately 10% of the overall budget goes towards maintenance each year, and that has gone up in the thirteen years or so that I've been here. So we don't have a specific reserve for it. We do budget every year, and every year, those maintenance needs are, can be very different.
So have you drawn the reserves down to zero at any given point? Or do you have some kind of a fund balance that you keep from your tier?
Well, we have a fund balance within the city, but we don't have a specific maintenance fund balance.
I'm trying to get at what you really need long-term would be a specific fund balance for maintenance. Because as you grow the pieces that are displayed, and even the shock art is going to need to be repaired occasionally. So I would suggest that you probably want to look through the budget process to have a fund balance specifically for maintenance long-term.
Thank you. That is something that we will definitely consider.
Well, thank you, Lauren. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and I appreciate you coming tonight and talking with us.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for a final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who'd like to speak, Council, at this time? Please come down and state your name and address, please.
I'm Strider Benston, 951 17th. I really appreciate this discussion we just heard. I'm kind of like Brian Bagley. I didn't know much of the artwork or understand it, but it really helps me understand it a lot better by seeing the whole process and the purview and the scope of it. And I appreciate Councilmember Santos' concern about alternative or supplementary funding because over the long term, of course, that's clearly a viable aspect of maintaining. I spent twenty years in Chicago, and one of the major icons of the city of Chicago, three, Buckingham Fountain, the bird, the Picasso bird at the Civic Center, and the Chagall Muriel. And that's kind of part of the identity of Chicago. Now, they weren't necessarily local artists, but it certainly is part of the image of the city. And I agree with Councilmember Santos about, let's try to focus as much as possible on local or Colorado artists, but it doesn't exclude. So that having been said, I would like to make note that today tragically, or is the 10th anniversary tragically of our invasion of Iraq, and that horrid, unnecessary, and illegal war that we engaged in, and we're still and will be for another generation or two paying the consequences of that particular war. And one of the points to learn from that is the corruption of the knowledge base and the lies about what brought us into that work, into that war, and the private interests that had an investment in promoting the war, and the people couldn't find out for years and years, and then we began to find out more and more about what was happening. And part of that is the monopolization and self-censorship of the press. If we do not have a free press, we do not have a viable society. And part of the issue is the whole thing, the attacks on government and on the economy. This is government. This is what we do. We get together as a community, and we try to do something that's going to help be healthy for our society, for our community, and for our civilization. Let's keep that in mind as we look in political issues.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who'd like to speak at the final call? Public invited to be heard. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Cruz. I have a couple of things I would like to talk about. First of all, the Ed Green Scholarship Dinner in silent auction that benefits our sister cities is Friday, April 26th. That happens to be when we are all on our, having our retreat. And I was wondering if there was any interest in, instead of going some other place for dinner, in attending the Ed Green Scholarship Dinner instead as a group? I know that they would appreciate it. It's something to think about, anyway. Also, I found out today that El Presidente of Ciudad Guzman is going to be coming to Longmont in July. So we need to be thinking about how we will welcome him, because that will be a really cool thing. And they did such a great job when I was there. Being on Sister Cities has certainly been a wonderful experience for me, and I want to make sure that we welcome him well. I also wanted to mention my business of the week. Since I'm a little hungry for dessert, I thought I would make it Minchie's Frozen Yogurt. It's an awesome place to go when you're wanting something cold and sweet, which with summer coming up, could be any time. So give Minchie's a try. And if Council will think about this Ed Green Dinner, I would appreciate it.
Councilmember Lovison?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we, many of us were in DC, and thank you Acting Mayor Bagley for taking care of the city for us while we were gone. We received a very awesome picture of Acting Mayor Bagley in the mayor's office with his feet up on the desk. So that was good to know that he was on the job. I did want to share some information that I found out when I was in the transportation meeting, the committee that I'm on. We had the administrator for the Federal Rail Administration come in and speak. His name's Joseph Zabo. And he, you know, he didn't have time to take questions. However, the mayor of Windsor and the city manager of Fort Collins chased him down and were able to weasel an appointment for the next day. And they are considering, looking at the train horn noise rule again. And one of the things that the mayor of Windsor, Mayor of Azcaz was mentioning was that the, it shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all. So in a community like ours, when a train is only going 20 miles an hour, is it appropriate for a train to have to honk their horn at every intersection all the way through town? Probably not necessary. So they are thinking about reopening that, and it is encouraging. So I just wanted to share that. I know that that is something that our residents are really concerned about. And I just wanted to let folks know that particularly, the folks from Colorado really made a difference this pastime at National Cities.
Councilmember Lovison?
Thank you. And I really appreciate everybody else being at the meeting in the past couple of years. I've been the only person, and there's been somewhat of an advantage, because it's really forced me to hang out with different people. And I especially, some years, got to know people from the other city councils in Colorado much more than I would have. So there's some benefit sometimes. I would also like to update the council. Some of this information on the tax-exempt muni bonds is changing daily. In fact, this afternoon, the National Association of Counties and NLC had a webinar, phone call regarding some of the discussions on that piece of legislation. Plus also, some of the horse trading that can go on might be that in order to keep the tax-exempt status of muni bonds, the trade-off may be the Marketplace Fairness Act, which, you know, taking one or the other, we need both of them. And the market, for those out there in TV land that don't know what the Marketplace Fairness Act would be, it would be national legislation that would allow the collection of a tax that's already due but not being remitted to cities, paid to cities, just like you're paying your tax at the cashier at any store in Longmont. When you're checking out online, the tax is not being sent to the city of Longmont or to the state of Colorado. And the Marketplace Fairness Act would allow those taxes that are due to us to come and be paid at the point you're purchasing. And frankly, the information is that the tax exemption of muni bonds is not just the muni bonds moving forward, but the tax exemption would also pertain to the billions of dollars of municipal bonds that are out there that have not yet been paid off. And I think that that's a piece of information that may not have been clear to a lot of people. So some of the takeaways I had from DC is learning a little more deeply around these issues, and also hearing a little bit about Department of Commerce programs, and then having the opportunity to hear Senator McCain at lunch on the final luncheon on Tuesday, as well as Mr. Millsack and the vice president and a former congressman. So lots of good information out there, and a lot of things to work on in the future.
Councilmember Anderson? Well, yeah, as Councilmember Lovison indicated, several of us were at DC. So for those of us that met with the Colorado delegation, it was a hit-or-miss meeting, several of them. Councilmember, well, busting down several ranks. Representative Cory Gardner took the time to actually meet with us for several minutes, and met with me, Alex, and Bonnie for good, what, 20, 20, 25 minutes? And then he had to go to another meeting. And we finished up with his chief of staff and another member of his staff. We advocated for Longmont. We talked about the airport, CDPG, the Marketplace Fairness Act. I'm sorry? And the bond. But unfortunately, when we went to go meet with Senator Bennett and Senator Udall, we met with staff. Now, having sat on the other side of that table as a member of staff, they gave the same answers I used to give. And that didn't fly. So I would like to, I would like for us to extend an invitation to the senators and to Congressman Polis, because we met with his staff as well, for a meeting with us here in Longmont. When I worked in DC, the members I worked for made it a point to make sure that when elected officials were in Washington, they met with the elected officials, even if it was for five to 10 minutes. We met with Senator Bennett's staff, you know, talked about the five-year grand bargain, grand deal, which is not going to occur. It just seemed going one ear and out the other, unfortunately. So while it was, I feel that we put our best effort forward, and that meeting was Katie, Alex, myself, and Bonnie, and the mayor. I just felt that it just, again, went in one ear and out the other. And unfortunately, I had my board meeting that I needed to attend, so I wasn't able to go to Senator Udall. Senator Udall's met us before. Congressman Polis has met us before, but unfortunately, we weren't able to get in front of them at all. So I'd like to extend those, the next time there in Colorado, to extend an invitation to them to come here and to really look at whether or not we go for an extended period of time to NLC. I know several of us are on boards. Maybe we just go for those days and just come straight back. Because our purpose is to advocate for the city of Longmont. Everything else is secondary. So that was my purpose. The airport, you know, to talk some about the airport, you know, on our FAA meeting got canceled. To advocate for the airport, to make sure the CDPG didn't get cut, to talk about the Section 8 vouchers, you know, to go there and advocate for the city of Longmont. And that's what I did. And that's what we need to do. But if our members of Congress are not going to take five to 10 minutes to at least give us the courtesy to meet with us in Washington, DC, then they need to meet with us here in Colorado. I hate, you know, and I'm a little disappointed, but again, we busted our tail to go to do that, spent numerous nights away from family, and a lot of walking. And while I do think that our tax dollars were well-spent and we did our best, now it's their turn to come to us. So that's what I hope to achieve here in the next six months.
I'm just going to jump in at this point and talk about business that I'm going to advocate for in Longmont, which is Longmont Animal Hospital. I think they did a great job of watching my dog when she was really sick, and particularly Lynn Ferguson, the vet, came in on his day off to check on my dog. And then Aspen Meadows Emergency took over care of my dog for two days over the weekend. And the people there are just compassionate, care about people and dogs, and they allowed me to come in several times during the day and visit my dog. So my, I know that all the vets here in town are great vets, and I've interacted with several of them, but my hats go, my hat goes off to these businesses for what they did with my dog, and I appreciate that. So Longmont is such a great town. We have so many good stories, there's so many great people that are compassionate and great businesses. But this was just more than just making a buck for these people. It was a truly compassionate effort, and I appreciate that. I also want to comment on LTC today, on how fast they got out to a traffic accident that was involved in with a downed power line. I mean, they were Johnny on the spot. I couldn't believe how, it just like materialized from nowhere. So hats off to Tom Rianus and their crew. They just do a great job, and I appreciate being a mayor of such a great town that has such a responsive team to get out there with a telephone pole and fixing wires right away. So anyway, and I also like to thank the city of Longmont for sending us all out to NLC. It was a great experience. I learned a lot of things. I think one of the things that comes out of something like that is, you know, we're all able to bond together and learn a little bit more about each other outside of the council environment. And I think that that helps us work together as a team more effectively. So I think that there's some hidden things that happen at these conferences that people aren't aware of, that's a big benefit to the community. So anyway, I'm going to, I also like to thank Brian Bagley personally for watching over the city. I never for a moment lost sleep over what he's going to do.
It's such a great town.
Yeah, we have... Yeah, we have. So anyway, I'm going to sign off on that right now. Councilmember Lovison?
Yes, and some of the issues, I think that NLC schedules this conference every year. They've already scheduled next year's conference, and they never really know if Congress is going to be in session. I think we knew before we went out, they were not going to arrive until Tuesday night. And frankly, I've heard from several other councils that have gone out two and three days earlier that have scheduled, had much more luck scheduling meetings at key departments and with congressional and senate staff for more time than just a quick 10 minutes or 15 minutes, and be able to have, develop more of a relationship with the staff, and perhaps have actual time to see the congressmen or senators when they go out prior the week before. Some councils are going out the Wednesday or Thursday before, and they're getting a heck of a lot of work done even before the educational and professional development workshops start on Saturday morning. So that might be something in the future to look at, to see, you know, what we could do. And then National League of Cities is also constantly tweaking the way they're running these meetings, where there's sometimes three things going on simultaneously, and they're compressing a lot now into about two and a half days. And a lot of people now on Tuesday afternoons leave after the luncheon or they go up to the Hill.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I missed you all. I'm glad you're back. I have to say, I was getting a little worried. It was my reign, while short, was a lot like the end of the Lord of the Rings, where the mantle of power becomes so, you know, just so overwhelming that, you know, I just, I just didn't know. It became my precious. And thank you, Mayor, for coming back and saving me from the power that just almost consumed me. Thank you.
Well, I guess with that, city manager, any remarks?
I cannot top that, so no, no comments.
City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.